Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Aleria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Proverb today is 29:18, "When people do not accept divine guidance, they run wild, but whoever obeys the law is joyful." And Commissioner Calo, you have our dog today. Sometimes a short prayer things are the best. You remember it better.
Something different for me, I normally don't get these little dogs. But our featured dog is a male beagle. He was found in Lorraine. He's about a year old. Where are you going, guy? Come here. Come here, look up there. There you go. There you go. Is he available for adoption now?
The 11th.
The 11th, he's available for adoption. We have 26 dogs currently, so if you are ready to give your family a great Christmas present, stop by and pick out one of our dogs. Come on, buddy. Come on.
Another dog sees himself, that's cute.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Corporations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I have a couple personnel issues. We're in bargaining, I want to talk about that. Potential purchase and sale of real estate, it's ongoing. Potential litigation, or pending litigation. And potential hires. All those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of regular board meeting, we go into executive session, talk about those items identified. Thank you.
Thank you. Approved away the reading of the minutes of December 2nd?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Pose House Bill 377 and support the rights of all workers in Ohio to collectively bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Did you want to elaborate?
Yes. Sure. I just wanted to make sure that the taxpayers and the voters of Lorraine County were aware of this initiative that's underway in Columbus, House Bill 377. You know, it was back in 2011, after Governor Kasich was elected, that for some reason it seemed like folks were drunk on power at the time, and they launched an attack on workers' rights here in Ohio. That initiative was Senate Bill 5. Of course, I remember being at anti-Senate Bill 5 rallies with both of you and Lorraine and here on the square in Aleri, I think even over at the UAW Hall. And as a state representative and a former reporter who used to cover the legislature, I can honestly say that I witnessed probably one of the worst abuses of power I've ever seen, because this was an initiative that was simply railroaded through the legislature without listening to the public. It was a very divisive issue. And the abuse of power even carried over to the locking out of the general public at the Capitol. I mean, hard to believe. I remember walking into the Capitol that day and the trooper saying, "Well, you can go through as a state rep, but everybody else needs to stay." And I said, you know, "These are the taxpayers of Ohio, they own the building. We don't own it, you don't own it. And I don't know who gave you your orders, but this building belongs to the taxpayers." And of course, they were following their orders and the demonstrators were forced to stay outside until finally some action was taken to eventually bring them in. But it was truly one of the, you know, the saddest days, I think, in Ohio history. And it was a direct attack on our safety forces. These are the folks who, you know, every single day they go to work and, I mean, let's face it, as we sit here, we don't face the same challenges that they do every day. They literally put their lives on the line. And these folks were literally being attacked. And along with the teachers in Ohio who have greatly inspired and helped our childrens and our children and our future leaders. November 2011 came about and 62% of Ohioans clearly said that they opposed Senate Bill 5. In fact, it was interesting, only five out of our 88 counties is where the voters actually said they supported Senate Bill 5. But 62% of Ohio voters clearly said they opposed Senate Bill 5, they supported the rights of workers to collectively bargain. So here we are in 2015, and House Bill 377 comes about. Representative Tom Brinkman out of the Cincinnati area, who can be quite extreme, and that can be factually proven. Here's another attack on workers. And this bill, I think, clearly, you know, thumbs its nose at the will of the voters of Ohio, who I think overwhelmingly sent a message back in 2011, saying they support collective bargaining. I strongly support, you know, the rights of workers to organize and to collectively bargain. There's a reason in this country why we have a 40-hour work week, why we have overtime, why we have sick days, why we have better health care, why we have better pay. And if you're not a member of a union, you can thank the unions for all those things. They made it possible. So I would urge you to call your representatives in Columbus. This bill's already had a hearing in committee. And one of the cosponsors of the bill is the chairman of the committee, so I wouldn't be surprised if he wants to at least try to get it out of committee and potentially to the House floor. But it's House Bill 377, and this resolution here just basically says that we oppose House Bill 377 and support the rights of all workers in Ohio to collective bargaining.
Yeah, it's a shame that those few down there, to the extreme, I've just haven't got back from Columbus, so there were discussions about these issues, don't understand that the voters came out 62%. And most of the legislature shouldn't be supporting this, or won't be supporting it by all the discussion I had with, you know, bipartisan group Sunday, Monday while I was in Columbus, the Commissioners' Association. So I think it's just some guys who have just, you know, gone off the reservation and think they're going to try something that really has no success, but are trying to grandstand for their own election for next year.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under the Engineer Work Contract of VO Menzu &amp; Son Inc., millersburg in the amount of $993,980.30 for the Hughes Ridge Bridge 0354 replacement project. Seven bids received in November 12th, this being the most responsive compliance specifications. The estimate was $1,178,473. 95% of the funding is federal highway administration through CEAO, and remaining 5% will be paid from the MVGT Bridge Engineering Project Account. Issue notice, proceed letter on or by January 15th and complete on or before September 30th. Authorized administrator, notify auditor, release retained at completion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Proceed by force account for normal and general maintenance during the 2016 on county roads for safety of the traveling public.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Post low limit signs, a state weight limit reduction by 24% on various county roads for the thaw and moisture period, in accordance with the Ohio Revise Code 5577.07 effective February 1st, 2016 through May 1st, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under Prosecutor Treasurer, excepting generalized DTEC appropriation expenditure report is submitted by the Lorraine County Treasurer and Prosecutor pursuant to the Ohio Revise Code 321.261 for the year 2016. Revenue generated for 2015 was $388,325. 2016 estimate of anticipated revenue will be approximately $350,000. Tax unit of prosecutor's office has expanded $396,000 and anticipates another $10,000 by the year end, and treasurer spent $330,053.99 out of the $491,245 appropriated.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
I have no further comments this morning, thank you.
Do you want me to do these two resolutions?
I thought when you came to the courtship or however you wanted to do it, but yeah, shit, I'll be fine, thanks. We can talk about that a little bit.
We have one, let me see if it goes in order. Well, we have two resolutions from workforce development. One is amending Resolution 10426, adopted June 20 through 2010, designating Lorraine County Workforce Development Agencies to serve as a one-stop operator for Lorraine County Workforce Area 4. And this is to coordinate service delivery among the partners, among physical Ohio Means Job Centers. The services across the local area workforce development system, implementing workforce development board policies, and reporting to the local development board on operation.
So moved.
Second.
Do you want to comment on that?
Well, you know, both these resolutions, I'll comment on both at the same time. Under the WEOLA Act, which replaced WIER, there was some new changes, and some of those changes are quite significant. The WEOLA Board, I keep calling it the WIB, it's the WIB Board, but the WEOLA requires that the WIB Board now become more of a governing board than it was in the past. It'll share more authority with the Board of Commissioners than it enjoyed under the WIER Act. So they have to have, according to the code, at least staff to be able to carry out some of the objectives of the WIB Board. It's impractical for the WIB Board to try to hire staff. They have no structure, they're not formed into any kind of organization. So generally what's been happening under the guidance is that the existing workforce development agencies have been designated as staff to the WIB Board, to meet the requirement of WEOLA. And we had a very lengthy meeting and training session with the WIB Board a few weeks back. We brought in outside help to do that. And the WIB Board made a, passed a resolution agreeing to have the WDA service staff to the WIB Board. We need to endorse that, that's the Board's authority here. And then secondly, as the Ohio Means Job Operator, we had moved what was previously the one-stop until it became the Ohio Means Jobs. We moved it to designation from the Workforce Institute to the Workforce Development Agency because we could facilitate some changes that we wanted in how we structured contracts and services in the community. It was a good move for us then. Unfortunately, under WEOLA, the entity that acts as staff to the WIB Board cannot also at the same time be designated as the Ohio Means Job one-stop operator. So we have to rescind that resolution, making that change, go back to the Workforce Institute, who's still under contract for an additional two years, to be the Ohio Means Job Operator. And then at the end of 2000, well, actually the middle of 2017, because we operate on a state fiscal year with regard to workforce development issues, we'll be either redesignating or maybe another entity that tries to compete for that. We haven't had a lot of success in that, we have a really good program. WEOLA is cleaning up some things, but we didn't have the problems that WEOLA tried to clean up in other communities. So we're struggling a little bit with it, but I think these changes will be fine, it'll continue seamlessly to deliver services, we'll be able to be very fluid in how we operate, and we're going to continue to improve the WIB Board because there's changes on the WIB Board that I need to talk to you about with regard to the composition and how the Board of Commissioners appoints that composition to be an oversight board within the workforce development system. So, you know, there's several things going on right now, and the guidance out of the federal government's been slow, and even furthermore, the guidance out of the state has been equally slow because, as you know, the Area 7 dispute has not been rectified. I'm not sure when that may occur. I don't have a clear line of sight to when we're going to get additional guidance, but we still have certain things under WEOLA we're required to perform even absent that guidance. And for the public, when I speak to guidance, is they pass these laws, and then the departments that oversee them interpret those laws and pretty much give us specific ideas of where we need to be at. That really hasn't occurred in a big way right now. And we still don't know we're going to be an independent agency. We're operating under that assumption right now, and we're establishing ourselves under that assumption. But I may be back here in a few months, asking you to redo all of this, what we're doing right now.
Well, Area 7 was meeting at 4:45 Monday, going into their meeting when we got done with our sessions. There was discussion on what they're going to do moving forward and what their expectations are. And we had that whole discussion for over a year, what was going to happen with us, and we decided to just send down, we'll stay solo.
Sure. For what it's worth, Commissioner, Lake County's in the same boat like we are. You and I both had conversation with county commissioners over there when we decided that we were going to head down the same course. Obviously, in separate vehicles, because we're not contiguous, we can't join. I really would love to be partners with Lake County in a combined workforce development area, but you have to be contiguous to be able to do that. But they sharted the same course we did. They felt that they had a strong delivery system in place already, and amalgamating with additional partners didn't seem the best alternative to them, so they've asked to remain independent, just similar to Lorraine County remaining independent. Remembering that, we only have one metric that we haven't achieved in how many years. And this year, we exceeded all of our expectations except in one area, and we met that area. So we continue to deliver good product, and if we weren't delivering a good product, I think that changes would be warranted, but sometimes what you're doing is enough. And I will be talking about, you know, the WIB Board changes with you, because we have to do additional alignment on some of the WIB Board members. Fortunately, some have to leave and some additional ones have to change because they're more specific about how to fill those spots on the WIB Board. By the way, the outside training we brought in was very good. We spent two or three hours in session bringing the new board, or bringing the board up to speed on the new regulations.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
The other one is to designate Lorraine County Workforce Development Agency to serve as a staff and fiscal agent to Lorraine County Workforce Development Board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
That's it?
That's it.
Mr. Ennis?
Commissioners, I do have a couple of brief updates regarding pending litigation. I did also want to mention that, believe it or not, there was something really good that happened at the Browns game on Sunday. If you watched it, they played the National Anthem from the Pearl Harbor on the deck of the USS Missouri, I believe. And as Brad knows, I'm a big person on remembering the people who lost their lives at Pearl Harbor, so I thought that was really cool. And if, for some reason unknown to mankind, you actually recorded the Browns game and you haven't burned it yet, you might want to go back and look at the playing of the National Anthem. And I also wanted to recognize all the veterans that went to the various schools and places around the county, and reminded our youngest generation of what happened at Pearl Harbor. I thought that was very cool, too.
My mom's first husband was one of those tragically killed at Pearl Harbor, and so I have two brothers, a brother and a sister, whose father passed away that way, so. This past Friday, Commissioner Calo and I attended the Ohio Public Works Integrating Committee meeting. Just to give you some numbers, there were over $35 million worth of projects in total. Out of that $35 million, there were $9.5 million in requests for funding. So out of that, there were $6 million in grants and $3.5 million in loans. So that's for District 9, which includes Lorraine County here on Emadina Counties. So there would be a lot of roadwork going on in and around this area, so that's good news. Monday, I had my Goodwill Board meeting, which we are working on budget issues at Goodwill, just like we are here, having some difficulties, as everybody is. And then on Tuesday, yesterday, we had the Democrat Women's Christmas Party, and I was kind of having a hard time getting in the Christmas spirit until hearing the barbershop quartet. They were awesome, really, they were great. And also Ann Molnar was there, and they once sang one song directly to her, and it was really a nice time, it was really good to see her, I hadn't seen her for quite a while, she looked good. And on Saturday, or Friday evening, I went actually to Lakewood for a Christmas benefit. It's going to probably be an annual thing, it was a spaghetti dinner to help carry on the memory of Mary Fran Massey, which is Ron's aunt, who passed away this year, but she had fostered over 100 children in her life. And so we all brought toys for the children, and it was a really nice event, Santa was there, and so hopefully that'll be a yearly thing to collect toys for the foster children. So, end of my report.
Yeah, busy week. I'd like to thank Mexican Mutual, I did the celebrity bartending gig on Friday night, that was fun, we packed the place. Says, "Good slinging drinks, again, nice raising money for a good cause." It's nice to see our ethnic clubs trying to stay around, but we've lost so many of them over the years, and, you know, just the knowledge of our community, so. Friday, prior to Public Works Committee, I was a guest speaker at the Oberlin Rotary at Oberlin Inn. I'd like to thank Sharon Reebok for inviting me down. Always when you're in Oberlin, you've got a lot of questions, and very good questions from the people engaged here, a lot of discussion again about transit and economic development and what we're doing about it, so explaining that and what our processes are and how we work with cities and communities. We all got to eat stir fry, but Eric Norberg got a cheeseburger, so I said, "Must be his last meal as he's leaving Oberlin." Sunday and Monday, I was in Columbus attending the County Commissioners' Association Annual Conference. Congratulations to Doug Corcoran from Ross County as our new president. He served a long time on the board, eight years. He was actually a longtime treasurer for the organization. We changed our bylaws back in 2010 for him to continue because he did such a great job. Lot of discussion, there's a lot of good sessions down there, not as heavily attended, a lot of our staff were down there, our clerk was down there, she says, the president of her organization. Keith Bailey was down there from Solid Waste, we had a lot of discussion with a couple other counties in regards to the solid waste. I attended one of the sessions, it's a new program, Honorable Evelyn Lundberg Stratton, the retired Supreme Court Justice. She's in charge of a national initiative in Ohio called Stepping Up. It's a council of state governments, National Association of Counties, ARNAICO, and the American Psychiatric Foundation to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails. Franklin County was one of six counties nationwide selected to be a demonstration site, and now they've expanded it in Ohio with Athens, Claremont Lake, Megs, Montgomery, Portage, Shelby, and Summit Counties. It's the ability working through the jails and the courts, with the probate court, in a, to identify and divert and get people to treatment, because they ends up in our county jails, and we're not, you know, if they change their medicine or if they're only in a short staying, trying to get them back on their path. But I will talk to Judge Walther in regards to this and possibly, because she said more counties are more than welcome to join this group as well, so. They're trying to divert the people out of sitting in our jails and keeping them on their meds in a diversion program. We had our annual meeting, again, we elected the new officers officially. We do have a lot of the bylaws, every five years, the organization has to look at their bylaws. I was on the bylaw committee five years ago, and every time you change bylaws, five years later, you realize that things you changed, not everything got changed through the process. It was a very long contentious meeting, they tried to change how we vote for our board, which would change the DR, DR, DR mix. But after a long discussion and amendments and a roll call vote, we didn't have any changes in regards to that, which keeps them as long as they are. I've served on some committees over the years, I've been really involved with joint administration on elections, which is always a hot topic here in Ohio. We had a presentation done, how we're going to deal with our outdated voting equipment. You know, we got the poll books, and those worked very well in our county, there were some counties had problems, Hamilton was a big discussion. Come to find out, they didn't clear their stuff from their special elections in August, so that is, it will be out official, I guess Friday the reports do. But since HAVA was instituted back in 2000, the federal government put some major money into helping counties provide voting machines, none of those dollars are coming forward. And we've got to look at a way of redoing it, there's discussion with the state government on how that's going to be done, possibly through our capital request, which our state rep, Dan Ramos, sent out to us to work on. I'll be attending a meeting January 13th with the Elections Association, and they're going to invite the state legislature, the committees who handle that, to hopefully see if we can get that on the agenda as a budget item, because it's big money and none of the counties can afford it. And after that, we actually had a sit-down through the meeting discussing some of the issues that we're really going to have to work on significantly in regards to making sure our elections go forward properly, especially going into a presidential year. There were a lot of other items on the agenda, but again, it was a, it's always good to network with your peers, how they're doing business, how they're getting through some issues. There's some counties doing very well, as I was talking to Paula Brooks from Franklin County.
That's where all the money goes.
It's all the money, exactly. They're spending, they're building a Morgan Jail, $200 million in capital and paying cash for it. It's wonderful, you know, a lot of us jealous of that, and how some of the smaller counties are making it, and the ones who have issues like we do, looking at cuts and, you know, freezes just to get through so we can continue to perform services. That is the end of my report.
Yeah, I want to thank you for your ongoing involvement in the County Commissioners' Association. I know you've been very active with them and been a strong voice for county government, and that's an important organization, I can tell you, they lobby hard, as a former state rep, they flex their muscle a lot down there. But they're looking out for local government, and that's what's important, so. Had the opportunity to attend a recent MOVE meeting, which is the community-based organization that is pushing forward and advocating for transit in this county. MOVE standing for Mobility Opportunity for a Vibrant Economy. And they're going to be launching a feasibility study soon, so residents in Lorraine County probably in the next month to six weeks will probably be getting a phone call or two to ask the public about their position on transit and what they would be likely to support or not support in the future. So interested in seeing how the results of that come back, and that'll be shared with the public in the first quarter of 2016. We continue to hold discussions and meetings concerning our lakefront planning application that we will be making to Nowacka. It's important to point out that this lakefront planning application is a partnership between the county commissioners and local government. The governments of Vermillion, Lorraine, Sheffield Lake, Avon Lake are all supportive. Some have already passed their resolutions, others are in the process of going through the three-reading process to have those approved. Had the opportunity to attend the Lorraine County Community Alliance last Friday. We're really fortunate in this county, we're one of the few counties that has an alliance where we bring together townships and villages and municipalities and leaders in government and the community to all talk about issues impacting- impacting our residents. And that was a very productive roundtable discussion, kind of a government update at the end of the year, and soon we'll be discussing transportation issues early in 2016. Also, I'll have the opportunity this evening to attend the Main Street Elyria meeting. I understand at that meeting, formal action will be taken, so that the commissioners will have a voting seat with them, along with the city of Elyria. And our sympathies go out to the family of Pastor Gary Beideman, the husband of former Clerk of Courts Beideman. Prayers and sympathies to you as you go through this morning process and the loss of Gary Beideman.
For correspondence?
And will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning?
Terry, you just have nothing better to do but come watch us this morning.
Yes, sir.
See, and I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the administrator and assistant county prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loranc county.com. Click on...